But I think what I know more than anything else is that this is a resilient city. We've seen that time and time again, and it's no secret that our city has its challenges right now. But I believe that all of those challenges are fixable. The reason I believe those challenges exist is because we have let ideology get in the way of actually making progress. I believe we need more housing in this city, including market rate. I think we needed it yesterday. It should not have to be 100% affordable to build affordable housing. I believe we need clean, safe, tent-free streets again. I believe we need to invest in public safety. I believe we need real strategies that will revitalize downtown and bring business back. And I believe that San Francisco needs to continue to be a city for families in many of the ways that we are falling short for our families today. I even believe that San Francisco can be the dance music capital of the West Coast and even the nation. And I believe that that will be a critical piece of how we actually get young people to engage with our downtown core again. So above all that, though, I believe we need to all work together as a Democratic Party to bring change to the supervisor seat for District Five. And I think the way we will do that is by building a Big Ten. I know for a fact that I speak to a very moderate voter in District Five. And while District Five is progressive by nature, we will be able to get new leadership in because we were able to bring people from all parts of the party into the vision of new leadership for District Five. So I'm grateful to be here. Thank you.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you for that opening. So let's just move on real quick into into our questions. And the question that I'm going to start you off with, let's just pretend that you are a member of the Board of Supervisors. What are your main priorities going to be in relation to your district specifically? What do you think your district needs the most help with and where will your focus be?
Sure. So the first is cleaner, safer streets. It's no secret that in District Five, which ranges all the way from, as you all know, look at the map, the Tenderloin, all the way through to the Panhandle, there is not a single neighborhood in District Five that has not had its struggles with the mental health and addiction crises that are so prevalent in our city today. And so one of the first things that I will do is work with the mayor's office, work with my fellow supervisors to implement new policies to take a fundamentally different approach on those fronts. I do personally believe that 51-50 holds need to be a part of the conversation when someone is receiving city provided Narcan. I do personally believe that now that we have clarity around the grants passed ruling, we need to be much tougher in making sure that if we offer someone shelter and they refuse it, we make sure that we are clearing encampments and ultimately bringing order back to the streets again. I do also believe that investing in law enforcement is a winning strategy. That doesn't necessarily mean more officers on the streets, but initiatives like Prop E, I do think are worthwhile investments to making sure that we are able to reduce the amount of time from when a crime is committed to when a suspect is apprehended, to ensure that we are actually tackling the crime problem in San Francisco today.
Great. Thank you so much for that answer. Vice Chair Barnes.
So building on the housing that you believe in, Scotty, that I heard, welcome, welcome. Thank you for being here today. You know, San Francisco has an affordability crisis. And so how would you work as supervisor to support the housing element in your district? Thank you.
Yeah. So one of the, one of the areas where many of the affordable housing projects in San Francisco have been delayed, and certainly District Five has not been an exception to this, is the ideological belief that affordable housing developments need to be comprised of 100% affordable housing units. I do not believe that. I think market rate is a necessary part of the conversation. And so long as we're working with private sector developers to get projects built, we as a city need to do everything we can to make sure that we are making progress on our obligations under the housing element, while also making sure that the economics of deals make sense for the people we partner with. And so number one is we will actually just start building housing and we won't be afraid to include market rate in the conversation. If you look at 400 Divisadero Street, that is a site that is now a blight in our neighborhood and has continued to exist as one for years at this point. 730 Stanion took too long, in my opinion, to get built. And we have countless other sites all across District Five, including, there's a school building 500 feet from the office I'm sitting in in Hayes Valley right now. Large floor plate sites that are great options for where we can build more affordable housing, but are being held up not just by the red tape and bureaucracy we talk about in City Hall, but also because of the ideology of our leaders in City Hall. I believe we need to make progress. We need to include compromise as a part of the conversation. And ultimately, we need to deliver for San Franciscans who are being priced out of the city that we all love.
Great. Thank you for that. So members, are there any other questions out there? I have got another. All right. So you actually have a project that is near and dear, oh, Controller Cohen.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the recognition. Mr. Jacobs, you have some really strong, you're communicating really strong, deep-heldled beliefs when it comes to, when it comes to building in San Francisco. Do you have any experience in doing so, building anything?
Have I, have I personally built a building before, or sorry, what, what do you mean specifically?
I'm asking you, what your strong beliefs are coming from somewhere. I tried to just reason, reading the housing, housing element. I mean, what, where, how did you develop these strong convictions? And my question was, were you a developer? Are you a developer? Have you developed projects? Have you been on a team of development? I mean, where did these beliefs or set of assumptions, how did you develop them?
Well, fundamentally, they come from the fact that for a long time I thought I was going to be a high school history teacher. And as someone who's from here, I did not feel like I was going to be able to move to San Francisco and frankly, wasn't able to move to San Francisco on the salary that I was offered when I first had a job to be a teacher because there was a lack of affordable housing. And when I looked into why there was a lack of affordable housing, it was oftentimes because the units just were not getting built fast enough. I, you know, do have friends who are in the real estate industry and I hear from them all the time about why they are giving up on building in San Francisco, which to me, you know, is a symptom of a larger problem, which is that if we don't have developers feeling confident in their ability to do business in San Francisco, it puts the entire affordable housing conversation at risk. We need to do more, in my opinion, to make sure that developers do feel confident in building here. And I, I'm not afraid to acknowledge that I do believe developers can be a force for good in this city.
So let me, let me dovetail on that, if I may. So you've got a project in your district that is near and dear to my heart, and that would be Booker T. Washington. So it's a facility for emancipated youth with a radio station and a gym on the bottom. It's, it's a great project. When you look at District Five, do you see other opportunities for something, you know, for things like that? You know, do you have any feelings on emancipated youth? It's, it's a, you know, it's a housing need that we have that is not talked about as much as it should be. And you just happen to have one of the, the better projects in your district.
Yeah. Look, ultimately, you know, I don't think that we can say, well, some people deserve housing and other people don't. I think ultimately, it's important to take community input into ultimately ensuring that any housing project is ultimately successful because it's sort of, I think of it as like an organ and a body. If you don't do a good job making sure that, you know, you, you make sure the bot, the host body is going to take the organ that you're working on. I'm not a doctor clearly either, not a developer, not a doctor, but probably for the better. I, you know, I believe that ultimately every district in San Francisco needs to have a variety of housing projects built in them, including homeless shelters, including facilities for emancipated youth, including market rate housing, including affordable housing for teachers and nurses and police officers and firefighters, et cetera. Ultimately, I think the job of a supervisor is to be a facilitator of the conversations between the city and the community to make sure that those projects don't just get built, but that they are teed up to be successful and part of the fabric of the community in which they're placed. And so, you know, that is somewhere I think I have a very different philosophy on what it means to be a supervisor than Dean Preston. And somewhere that I'm frankly very excited after watching, I would say, many of his failings as a supervisor on that front, to be the conduit for the communities that I would represent to City Hall.
Great. Thank you. So we're going to end with a question from Member Akbar, and then you'll have your one-minute recap.
Sure.
Yes. Good morning, Jacobs. I just wanted to ask, what are your plans to keep children safe in the Tenderloin?
Yeah. So I think that starts with making sure that the Tenderloin, we deal with the frankly, out-of-control drug epidemic and crisis that's going in the city right now. I have been very clear that I believe we need to refer undocumented convicted drug dealers, particularly those distributing fentanyl, to ICE. I think we need to take hard stance approaches like that to ultimately start getting the root causes of what is making the streets frankly unsafe, not just for children, but for families. And unfortunately, the Tenderloin has been disproportionately impacted by that. So, you know, I think it's partnering with law enforcement at a variety of levels throughout government. I think it's investing in the programs that ultimately enable kids to have somewhere to play in the midst of, you know, unsafe streets. And ultimately, working with the different community leaders in the Tenderloin to make sure that the children of the Tenderloin have access to all of the same resources that the kids in Alamo Square have access to. So, you know, ultimately, the Tenderloin is, you know, where the highest concentration of families are in the entire city of San Francisco. And I think that often, thank you, gets forgotten. So.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that. So right now, you've got one minute to make conclusionary remarks.
Cool. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm obviously, I'm here and hopefully it's coming through that I'm a believer in a better future for San Francisco. And I want to be a part of that future. I got to the point where I couldn't keep just resharing things on Instagram and hoping that would make a difference. And that's ultimately a big part of why I'm running today. I'm young, I'm bringing new energy to the conversation. And most importantly, I think I'm bringing big ideas to the table. And beyond all of that, I will run again regardless of what happens this November. But I think the one thing that we probably can all agree upon, hopefully, is that we do need new leadership in District Five. Dean is not going to lose District Five because it became a more moderate district. He is going to lose because we were able to build a bigger tent. And I think that I can help expand that tent. And regardless of if I receive a first ranked or whatever it might be, my hope is that we can land on some kind of ranked choice strategy that ultimately helps to deliver a more expanded, bigger tent that ultimately is bigger than the one that Dean is going to be able to put together. There are a lot of people in District Five looking for the tent to join. And there are a lot of people who used to wear Dean shirts that are now looking for the tent to join. I want to build that with all of you, and I want to build it with Bilal, and I want to build it for San Francisco.
Great. Thank you so much, Scotty. It was really nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much. Take care.
Thanks.
Mr. Jacob, back into the attendee slot. And we have Ms. Autumn Lujan, who I'm promoting to panelists now. And her interview starts in two minutes, but I mean, we have the buffer. Go, go, go on when you see fit to start, let me put it that way. We're right on time. We're perfectly on time. Thank you for putting together a very crisp schedule.
Okay, great. Well, then why don't we get going? Where are you, Autumn? There you are. Hi.
Frozen, but give it a minute, it'll roll off.
Okay.
Yeah, but go ahead. Sorry.
Okay, can you hear us? Okay, great. So welcome to the endorsement interviews for the DCCC's 2024 election cycle. My name is Michaela Alioto-Pierre. I'm your co-chair along with Vice Chair Carrie Barnes. And Member Cedric Akbar will be our timekeeper. The format is one minute of opening, eight minutes of Q and A, and then one minute closing, as long as time permits. So are you ready?
I am ready.
Okay. When you're ready, why don't you, why don't you, you have the floor and start your opening remarks.
Perfect. My name is Autumn Loyon, and I led the school board recall. We won in a landslide. I led the campaign to bring algebra back, and we won in a landslide. Now I'm running for supervisor and I'm planning to win in a landslide. I'm running because I came home one day to find a drug user lighting fires under my home. I told him there were five kids on the top floor and I wasn't sure we could get out on time if my house caught fire and I came back to paint scorch marks on my sidewalk. He couldn't hear me. How many fires will he light while we wait for him to be ready for treatment? We must compel treatment when people are using drugs in our streets, and I'm the only candidate who's willing to do this. My fentanyl plan will arrest dealers, compel users into treatment, and restore police presence on our streets so kids can run to the corner store. Endorse me and bring the Tenderloin to hope.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Autumn. So let's, those are very compelling statements. Let's start with just a general basic question. If you're, let's pretend that you are the supervisor. What are the, the most important issues for District Five? And how do you go about effectuating change to get those goals? So it'd be good to have an idea of what your goals are for the district and how you're going to go about accomplishing them.
Absolutely. So the number one issue in District Five is also the number one issue in the city that's closing the open drug markets. I think we need to do not only drug market intervention, but have a plan for kind of the gaps in that strategy. And I think we need to do that with compassion. The, the other big issues are grocery store access. The Tenderloin doesn't have a grocery store, hasn't for decades. They had one from Whole Foods on Market Street for a couple of months, and then it closed due to crime issues. And also, the Fillmore is working, is, is losing their Safeway. And that is a tragedy. There are a lot of single moms in that, in that area. There are a lot of elderly people in that area. They rely on it for pharmacy services and banking services as well as groceries. And I've been a single mom. I cannot imagine trying to wrangle a stroller and grocery bags on the bus so that I can feed my family. I don't think we should be putting people through that. And it's critical for me that we get a grocery store to stay in the Fillmore. I'm the only candidate who, apart from Dean Preston, who went to those meetings about the Fillmore Safeway and what the community wants as, as we move forward. And the only candidate who is listening to the community about what they want on that site.
Great. Thank you. Vice Chair Barnes.
Hi, Autumn. Thank you for being here. Excuse me. Building on the affordability crisis that you just sort of intimated about with the grocery store, how will you support, if elected, building more housing in your district?
Yeah, you know, there are a number of sites in my district that are slated for housing that are not, that are not being built right now. A lot of them are looking at ministerial approval now. But first, first I want to talk about like what the, one of the success spots, which is 730 Stanion, is going up right now on Haight Street, Hayden Stanion. That's going to be affordable housing for families. It's going to be affordable housing for formerly homeless youth. I think that's great. I'm really looking forward to it. There's another lot, kind of on the same block across the street that people are looking at for affordable housing for seniors. That's for sale right now by the property owner for $7.5 million. I would love to see the city buy that land. Or if not, to work with the developer to get some percentage of affordable housing built on that site. There's also the site on, I think it's 400 Divis, the former car wash site. That's trying to get ministerial approval right now. And I want to work with the, I want to work with the neighborhoods and work with the developers to make sure we get sensible projects that will benefit the neighborhoods on that site. I want to, I want to, my particular focus is for housing for families and also micro apartments to, so that we have some deeply affordable housing for people who are coming here as refugees, for people who are just getting started in their lives.
Great. Thank you, Autumn. So you spoke a lot earlier at the very beginning of your remarks about the school district and the school district race. And do you have any thoughts on how you might, you know, it's, it's very tricky when you're on the Board of Supervisors because the school district and the school board is a very separate and autonomous agency. So how would you balance both of those concerns as a member of the Board of Supervisors? How could you affect any kind of influence on the school, on schools?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's interesting because when, when you're a supervisor, you don't have direct control over the schools. You really don't have direct control over anyone, right? You've got a megaphone and you've got a pen. You can shine a light on things and you can write some laws. And, you know, laws, school districts not in scope for you to write laws. So the, the good news is I have been tremendously effective with just a smaller megaphone than the supervisor has. We have, we've gotten competent leaders in our schools and we have brought algebra back by simply using that megaphone and getting, getting the support of the people of San Francisco. So as supervisor, I have a bigger megaphone. I can make the case to the residents of San Francisco who then have control over the schools. But also, I have a good relationship with most of the people on the school board. I would continue to work with them and with the Community College Board on any school issues. And I think a lot of this, you know, a lot of it comes down to your ability to negotiate with people, your ability to find solutions where, that, that makes sense for everyone, right? And that involves a lot of talking to people who disagree with you. And because you're looking at these very complex problems, and if you only stand in one spot and look at it, you're going to miss what's on the backside. And so the more you can, you can talk with the people, take their concerns seriously, and just like, like approve of them for, for being exactly where they are. I think you can get a lot done simply by, simply through influence.
Great. Thank you. Madam Controller.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Autumn. Just by way of introduction, I'm the state controller now, but I spent eight years on the San Francisco Board of Supervisors. And you have on this call three former boards, members of the Board of Supervisors. And so we have collectively a deep understanding about the board. I'm listening to your answers and you, as you lay out your policy and your focus. And I'm honestly wondering why you're not running for school board.
Yeah, so I, I have, I have worked in the schools in the past. My biological kids go to school down the peninsula. And I would rather have people who, people who have a closer connection with the school district running for school board who are super motivated to get things done. I find that, and so I, and we've, we've also trained a bunch of people to run for school board who I think would do a fantastic job. I don't think you need me on the school board, but I think the, the schools could use someone on the Board of Supervisors who deeply understands their issues and who could, and could, who could help, help coordinate things from the city.
So let me ask you, the Board of President, the Board of President of the Board of Supervisors makes committee assignments. Which committee? Tell me maybe two committees, your first and your second choice on where you'd like to serve and why.
I would like to, I haven't really thought about this. As far as the committee assignments, I know that the, I'd like to serve on committees that look at the, at Parks and Recreation. And the reason that I'd like to look at the, the Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation Committee stuff is that the Tenderloin in particular has very few parks compared to any other neighborhood in the city. We have 3,500 kids in that neighborhood and there's very few parks. I've been, I've been talking with folks who are trying to get more parks in that neighborhood and running into a lot of roadblocks. And I'd like to be there to help smooth things out for them. The other, the other, the other place I'd like to be is just the, I, I'd like to look at the, I'd also like to.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Autumn. So we have, we have time for your closing statement, a, a minute?
Yeah. I don't know if you remember, but it used to be, we could go anywhere in the world and say we're from San Francisco and people's eyes would light up. But not anymore. I want to be proud of our city again, and it starts with closing the open drug markets that are killing our people. We are a sanctuary city and I am proud of that. But right now, we are trying to be a sanctuary for both lambs and wolves, for vulnerable people and the drug dealers who will prey on them. The result is a killing field. Walk the Tenderloin and see it for yourself. We are delivering our most vulnerable people right into the hands of drug dealers who will kill them. We are not a sanctuary. We are a slaughterhouse and I am going to make it stop. I have a track record of standing up for the most vulnerable people and getting shit done. I've won five elections in D5. Stand with me and let's give the Tenderloin hope.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you very much for joining us today, today, Autumn.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye-bye.
All right, I have moved Ms. Lujan back down to attendee. We have next on your docket, Mr. Mahmoud at 12:00 PM. So we're a few minutes ahead of schedule. I will, I, I moved Mr. Mahmoud, Member Mahmoud, too, I guess, back into the attendee block per your FAQ. I'm going to promote him up now, but we won't start his interview until you give the go-ahead, Coach, Coach Alioto-Pierre. And then, once his interview is done, I will move him back down to be an attendee again because after him is, is Supervisor Preston. Sorry, that's just logistics for everyone who does.
I hope you guys don't mind my questioning. I'm asking real questions.
Hey, go for it. Yeah, you are, girl.
Like, wow.
Thank you for, thank you for, you know.
I can't even pretend anymore. I, I can't, I'm suffering over here trying to be nice and polite. Like, we just, this is serious. You want to fucking save the city? Then tell me how you're going to really do it.
It was always better with Controller Cohen in it.
I can't. Okay, so.
I had thought it had to be more a PC. I'm fine to bring knives out.
No, what are you talking about? Not knives out, this, this is, this is a hard job. Michaela, ask John Avalos, John, you served with Michaela, right?
Oh, yeah.
I did.
With me. I missed Michaela. This is a span of good 20 years of service.
I served with Michaela and Chris Daly at the same time.
So like, these, we, you're interviewing for a job. Convince me you know what you're doing. I'm not convinced.
I was, I was just saying, I love, I love Committee Member Cohen.
Please.
Humbly point out, not that it matters, but we, we are live and there's a, a.
It's recorded, yeah.
That I will be posting, so.
Thanks for humbling pointing that out, but I still stand by my comments.
I know you do, and I adore you for it, but I just wanted to, we didn't, we didn't suddenly go off the record.
Okay.
That being said, I did promote both candidate and Member Mahmoud into being the panelist, but I don't know if he, there you are. Okay, got you. Perfect. All right, you are now pinned to the screen. We technically are ahead of schedule by three minutes, so Coach Alioto-Pierre, whenever you're ready. We can wait till the actual block begins.
I wonder if Executive Director was confused by the, the presence of both Member Mahmoud and Member Gupta at the same time.
No, and I'm sure those two are not tired of that joke.
I will never be tired of it.
And a friendly logistical reminder to all of the, the panelists, the DCCC members, don't direct message the word stack to me, message it to all the hosts and panelists. There we go. Okay, okay, good. Now, okay. We got three so far. Okay. Yikes, okay, we got five. Okay, great. Hope you're all doing well, otherwise. It's a lovely sunny day to be on a Zoom doing a seven-hour interview. But it has to be done and it's important, and I agree with, with Controller Cohen. Coach Alioto-Pierre, when you're ready, I believe.
I'm, I think we are, we are ready. Hi, Noon. Welcome, Member Mahmoud. Obviously, I am your co-chair of, for today's proceedings along with Carrie Barnes. And Cedric, Member Cedric Akbar will be taking the time. You'll have a one-minute opening, followed by eight minutes of Q and A, and then, time permitting, a one-minute closing. So with that, the floor is yours. Welcome.
Thank, thank you, thank you, Michaela. Thank you all for having me today. My name is Bilal Mahmoud. I am a running for District Five supervisor to return our district to the beacon of hope that it once was. I'm a child of immigrants and a renter in the Tenderloin. I grew up in the Bay Area and the Tenderloin was actually San Francisco to my family. It's where we would visit when we visited the city for the small businesses, for the food, for the community. It was kind of like our home away from home. But for the last four years, that dream has come at risk. Over 1,000 small businesses have closed in Hayes Valley in the hate. There are thousands of units of housing that are being opposed and a double-digit increase in overdoses. It's time for new leadership and leadership that is rooted in community, for results and not excuses, where we focus on solutions and consensus building, not. It's time for new leadership and leadership that is rooted in community, for results and not excuses, where we focus on solutions and consensus building, not ideology and division. I have a decade of getting results in my professional experience from the Obama administration, where I supported small businesses, to setting up a fund in the pandemic to support workers getting guaranteed income to pay their rent. I have gotten results in the public and the private sector, and I will continue to get results on the district's biggest challenges, from housing to safety to transit. Look forward to sharing more about my plans to create a safe, safe and vibrant and inclusive District Five.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, why don't we just start with a general question, talking about what you think, uh, you know, the the biggest issues facing your district are? And how, as a member of the Board of Supervisors, you can actually effectuate that change, like what you can do in that in that regard, in that role?
Absolutely. Uh, I firmly believe that some of the three biggest challenges in District Five and broadly in our city are housing, public safety, and the economy. On housing, housing is the number one issue in the district. It affects homelessness. It affects the ability for our children to be able to stay here. It affects the ability for our workers to work here and create a vibrant uh economy in San Francisco. And the problem with housing in San Francisco is that we are the slowest city to build in the entire state, uh, and we need to make that faster to to execute. The problem, I've analyzed this and published it in different reports as well. The problem that we have is housing is that we have too many permits, too many fees, and too many meetings that and obstructioning that are making it extremely difficult to build housing in San Francisco. That doesn't just make it difficult to build affordable housing, but also middle-income and market-rate housing as well. That's where I want to focus on, is cutting, is streamlining our permitting process, cutting the number of impact fees, and ensuring that we can make us much more faster and have parallel processing in our city as well, a permit. The second is our fentanyl crisis. I live and rent in the Tenderloin. I walk by the open-air market, open-air drug market every night. Uh, and this affects not just the community and the people who are suffering on our streets, but it affects the families and the children that are living in San Francisco and in the Tenderloin as well. And I've advocated for a drug market intervention policy, which is a policy that was developed during the Obama administration, has been endorsed by Supervisor Dorsey as a plan, and criminal justice reform advocates as well, because it has a three-point component of ensuring that we both arrest fentanyl dealers, but also pa- provide a path to recovery for those that are on the streets, but also workforce development for those who are coming out of prison to make sure they don't enter back into the trade. And then, third is the economy. We need to think really big about how do we revitalize our downtown. The Tenderloin is proximitous to downtown as well. And what happens in the financial district, what happens in in North Beach and Nob Hill, all the surrounding areas around the Tenderloin affects District Five, affects the Tenderloin as well. I've been advocating for bold solutions like bringing a university campus into downtown San Francisco. Uh, we already house one of the universities, UC Law in the Tenderloin. We need to expand those those kind of investments for student housing and bring more students to activate our neighborhoods and ensure that combined with public safety, we're able to recover both our small businesses as well as our downtown economy.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that answer. I'm gonna move straight. You have so many people who want to ask you questions, so I'm gonna move straight to uh Member Ho.
Thank you.
And and uh just to mention that Vice Chair Barnes has has given her time for the other members, so.
Thank you.
Member Ho.
Chair, thank you. Um, uh, Member Mahmoud. Back to my favorite topic, public safety. Um, in your district, fentanyl is just painful. Eight hundred and eleven people died of fentanyl overdoses last year. What would you, what do you see um as the best solution to help curb that crisis, and what will you do as supervisor?
Absolutely. Uh, like I mentioned, uh, the fentanyl crisis affects this district the most, and if we don't solve it in District Five, it's going to continue to spread into other parts of the city as well. So we have to tackle it here first. And unfortunately, over the last several years, there's been a double-digit increase in overdoses, and even in the last year, there's been a seven percent increase in drug overdoses in the Tenderloin, while there has been a seven percent decrease citywide. And so we drastically need different approaches. I've advocated for a drug market intervention strategy to arrest fentanyl dealers and close the open-air drug market. It is the only policy in the United States that has actually successfully ended open-air drug markets. It was executed during the Obama administration, has worked effectively in High Point, North Carolina. It has worked effectively in Nashville, Tennessee. It is being piloted in the fentanyl market today in Kensington, Philadelphia, but we now need to bring it to San Francisco, and it works in three steps. The first is you have to incapacitate the drug market. We actually have some successful foundation of programs in San Francisco already with the Drug Market Agency Coordination Center, which is an inter-agency task force that has been set up uh by the Mayor's Office, Sheriff, Police, D P H, um, and multiple other divisions as well. And it has actually increased the streamlining of effective ability, getting these departments to talk to each other. The problem is that it is not fully funded. It is still entirely based on overtime. And so, uh, on the Board of Supervisors, I will act to ensure that we fully fund D Mac and ensure that we continue this uh inter-agency task force in perpetuity. Second, we have to deter future drug dealers from coming in. A critical component of the drug market intervention strategy is that you provide preventive prevention measures that people, as they exit the trade, they stay out of the trade. So when people leave prison, you have anti-recidivism work to provide workforce development, to ensure that they stay out of the trade as well, and provide that pathway from getting the drug dealers back into the system. Third is you have to have long-term prevention, and that involves beat patrol officers. In the Tenderloin, there are almost zero to none beat patrol officers today. In District Five, in talking to so many different communities, only Hayes Valley has had a significant increase in beat patrol officers, and they're all in overtime. And so we need to ensure that the beat patrol officer is walking day and night to ensure that our communities feel safe and feel uh secure, walking in our parks, walking in our streets, and that our families and our children can actually walk in the streets as well, to ensure that the drug dealers don't come back as well. It is that three-point plan that has worked in other cities across the country. It is the only drug market intervention strategy that has worked in the United States, and that is what I'm advocating to bring forward to San Francisco as well.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Chair Tom.
Thank you, um, Chair Elliott appear. Um, Member Mahmoud, I want to ask you again a question about the Tenderloin, because I think that's most on people's minds, particularly when it comes to D five. Um, you've described what you would do about interventions with the drug, open-air drug markets, but I'd like to know what, as supervisor, you would do to support uh the children of the Tenderloin, the elderly in the Tenderloin, people who are disabled, because the Tenderloin is very concentrated in those very vulnerable groups and populations. And while this drug market intervention is happening, um, they will still be uh living under these conditions, which are um in my mind um really disgraceful, that the Tenderloin has been in this condition for such a long time.
Absolutely. I think one of the first things that I want to state and acknowledge is that the Tenderloin has been treated like a containment zone for too long. As supervisor, I will end the treatment of the Tenderloin as a containment zone. It cannot be a dumping ground for the city's challenges and city's problems, because the thirty five hundred children and families that live here are the ones that have to deal with them. We need to treat these challenges like a citywide issue and address these from a holistic approach. Um, second is to ensure safety of children and 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 families here in the Tenderloin. It does go back to, what I've heard so much from the community is they miss having beat patrol officers. The Yemeni community that is here has said there used to be a Yemeni beat patrol officer who spoke their language, who knew their culture, who knew how to ensure safety, and they felt comfortable working with them. He doesn't work in the Tenderloin anymore. We need cultural competency from our police staff. We need cultural competency from our city hall to ensure that we actually have people who represent the community that can actually speak their language, speak their uh, understand the community needs. I would actually be the first Muslim American elected to the Board of Supervisors as well. And understanding the heavily co- component population of the Muslim American population in the Tenderloin, having that bridge of representation is the first step towards that. Third is we need to ensure one of the thriving components of District Five, what is what the children, the families love about our neighborhood. What I love about the neighborhood are the restaurants and the small businesses, as well as the transit and the parks. Um, and right now, people don't feel safe in the parks, uh, especially at night, and so having beat patrol officers throughout the neighborhood, having community relations, having community ambassadors, um, ensure that people can walk into their small businesses and their restaurants and feel like they can actually be comfortable there. That is how we ensure that the children and the families there are protected and ensure that we've revitalized the neighborhood for the long term.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Mahmoud. Uh, you have a one-minute closing now.
Uh, thank you again for the opportunity to meet today. I'll close with a note that as we've, we talked about during this interview, a lot is at stake in the race for District Five. It is both the geographic and the spiritual heart of our city. And we have some of the best restaurants, the most innovative housing modalities and transit developments. But we also host some of the city's biggest challenges, from our opioid crises to our housing crises. And we really need bold action to address these crises. I'm the only candidate to promote evidence-based solutions, like we talked about for the drug market intervention strategy, or Built for Zero Plan, which has actually addressed chronic homelessness in fourteen U S cities across the country. These are solutions that have actually ended opioid markets, actually solved homeless crises in cities across the country. And I have the experience in both the public and the private sector to deliver results on these proposals in San Francisco. But more importantly, to actually deliver results, we need to bring people together. And at a time when our city is so divided, we need to focus on consensus and not ideology. And that's why I'm honored to have the support of labor unions, our Attorney General, the State Senator, who don't always agree, but they agree on our candidacy for District Five.
Great. Wonderful. Well, thank you very, very much uh for joining us this afternoon and um.
And sorry. Chair Elliott appear, is it, is it possible? I know there were a number of members on stack for.
Yes.
Member Mahmoud, is it possible for us to extend the time to be able to ask these additional, just because there's so many members, I think it's important for members to be able to ask their questions. I know we're short on time today, but is it possible to extend for a few more minutes?
We are very short on time. You are absolutely right that we have a lot of people. Uh, then we had Gupta, and then Emron, and then San Girardi. Uh, and then you, Mr. Galata, and then Su- and then Supervisor Avalos. And so, yes, we do have a lot of people, but I'm sorry, we can't extend the interview without extending it for everyone, and Supervisor Preston is here, uh, is gonna be here in a few minutes for his interview at twelve fifteen. So I think we need to kind of, we need to stop it there, but obviously, the conversations can continue with Mr. Mahmoud. Um, he's certainly around as a member of the D triple C as well. So uh with that, um, I'm gonna conclude this interview. Thank you very much for joining us. And uh we will have Supervisor Preston here within a couple of minutes.
Thank you. Now, um, I can promote him up, and Member Mahmoud, I'm also gonna, yeah, you're gonna be removed and back to attendee status for our F A Q rule about D triple C members uh being in the same interview block. Um, okay. Up next. Supervisor Preston should be getting bumped up momentarily as a panelist. Uh, there you are. Supervisor Preston, good to have you here. Let me pin you to the screen. And we are about ninety seconds early on this one, um, but uh Coach Elliott appear when you're ready. Um, his block begins at twelve fifteen.
I mean, we can, we can begin now and start the clock now, correct? Uh, Executive Director.
Yes, it's your schedule. Uh, your rules. Um.
All right.
But that's the timekeeper.
Hi, hi there, Supervisor Preston. Thank you so much for joining us. It's nice to see you. Um, my name is Michaela Elliott appear. I am one of your co-chairs for the Endorsement Committee, along with Vice Chair Carrie Barnes. Uh, Member Akbar will be taking time today. Uh, the format is pretty straightforward. You get one minute of an opening, followed by eight minutes of Q and A, and then time permitting, one minute of an opening, I mean, of a close, of a closing. Um, it seems to have been working out where everybody's gotten their clothes, so I don't foresee that disappearing. Um, but with that, if uh if you are ready to go, we will start the clock, and you have the floor. Thank you for joining us today.
Excellent. Thanks so much. Um, and yes, ready to start. So my name's Dean Preston. Uh, good to see you all. I'm a public school parent and everyday muni writer, a tenant lawyer, and a twenty-eight-year resident of District Five. I currently have the honor of serving as a District Five Supervisor. Um, I've been elected twice in my district, most recently in twenty twenty, when I won by a double-digit margin, and have been doing uh exactly what I was elected to do. Uh, I've saved tens of thousands of San Franciscans from eviction, housed homeless families, and taxed the ultra-rich to fund social housing. Also worked with the Department of Public Health to create the city's first overdose prevention plan, filled vacant storefronts in our neighborhoods, and brought community ambassadors to all neighborhoods in my district. I am a lifelong Democrat, and my work is fully consistent with the stated values of the Democratic Party. Proud to be endorsed by the S F Labor Council, uh, the Tenants Union, Affordable Housing Alliance, dozens of other organizations, and hope to have your support, and really looking forward to your questions. Thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you. Um, I'm gonna just move straight to the members' questions, because uh there are a lot. Um.
Actually.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Vice Chair, would you like to ask a question?
Yes, I would. I'm fine for you to seed yours, but I would love.
Go ahead, Carrie.
I've actually, um Supervisor Preston, never um talked to you before, so welcome. Um, and I'm gonna take a page from Malia Cohen's book and ask you a specific question is, tell us why you should keep your job respectfully.
Well, as I mentioned, I, you know, I took, uh, I've been in office four years, uh, elected by a wide margin, have been very consistent in doing on the Board of Supervisors, uh, what I promised to do, uh, despite the fact of three months after I took office um, being uh a moving into a shelter-in-place and a city closure. And, you know, I think that we delivered on and have been delivering on a lot of the priorities. So I taxed the ultra-wealthy to generate over hundreds of millions of dollars for social housing, uh, banned evictions, kept uh tens of thousands of people housed. Like I mentioned, brought community ambassadors to every district, uh, every neighborhood of the district. Um, I think we've been a very hands-on office, extremely responsive to constituents. Um, and importantly, really centering the needs of low-income and working-class people in our district. Uh, folks who are often ignored in the halls of power, and I think uh even folks who I may uh have disagreements with around some of, you know, what our solutions are. I don't think anyone questions that at the center of our work has always been the plight of public housing residents, the right, the plight of uh of vulnerable residents in the, in in our district, uh, in the film war, in the Tenderloin. We take an equity lens to our work and actually really do that in every vote I cast. So I I'm proud of the work that we've done and and uh, you know, intend to continue that work if I'm, if I'm re-elected. And uh, you know, I think it's it's often hard in a one-minute soundbite, you know, to kind of go into the extensive nature of our work. It's one of the good things about campaigns is it forces us all to kind of assess all our votes and uh, and I feel like we've had a very productive uh four years, but there's still a lot left to do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, Hasib, Emron.
Uh, yes, thank you, Co-Chair. And uh, good afternoon to you now, uh Supervisor Preston. I wanted to focus my question on on this issue of illegal fencing uh happening in the mid-market area. So every day, there's stolen goods that are being sold on the streets of San Francisco. These fencing rings fuel retail theft. They create a dangerous environment on our streets that leads to stabbing and shootings, and sadly push legitimate vendors out of spaces where they have been working for years and provide for their families. So if you do have a second term as a supervisor, what steps would you take to dismantle illegal fencing operations that create chaos in District Five?
Yeah, thanks for the question. I appreciate that your question centers the, some of the violent conflicts that have resulted, because I really think that needs to be at the center of what we're what we're prioritizing and responding to. Uh, we've put forward a a number of ways to address that. One is, I I think it's unconscionable that our city's uh street violence intervention program, which has been successful uh in other neighborhoods, including Bayview, including the film war, uh, has never been fully deployed uh in the Tenderloin. I think we need to be looking specifically at um, at uh violence in the streets of of the Tenderloin, which is what we have prioritized dealing with. I think when it comes to fencing, there's really a range of folks operating. There's the more uh professionalized uh and problematic uh fencing that's occurring. I think it's important that we're not, you know, dealing with every, you know, hot dog vendor uh or or person selling something on the street uh with the same brush as what's clearly organized, uh, retail theft and fencing. So I think that is uh, that is important in our response. I I would say I don't agree that there's like uh chaos across District Five on the streets. I think that, in fact, our district uh has many neighborhoods that have really bounced back since the pandemic. Uh, and you know, every neighborhood that uh that I have represented for the full four years is experiencing a very strong recovery. Japan Town, the hate, the lower hate, Hayes Valley. Uh, I've represented the Tenderloin for for two years, and the reality is we have decades of the Tenderloin being treated as a containment zone with serious problems. I think we've improved uh some conditions in the Tenderloin, but there's a a lot more uh work to do. But but I I don't think it would be accurate to say that across District Five uh that that there's out-of-control street vending all over the district.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Member Cole.
Yeah, hi Supervisor Preston. Um, I heard you say in your opening remarks that your values are consistent with the values of the Democratic Party. I'd like to drill down on that for a minute. This D triple C has passed two public safety-related resolutions. In the first, we said that public safety is a fundamental right. And in the second, we said people who commit crimes should be held accountable. So my question is, do you support the San Francisco Democratic Party's position that fentanyl dealers should be arrested and prosecuted?
Thanks for the question. So first off, I I don't know, I have not reviewed the two resolutions, so I can't comment on those. The way you've described them sound consistent with uh with my. The way you've described them sound consistent with my views. I think I have drawn a very distinct line between those who are drug users and those who are dealing. I think that a law enforcement response to those who are dealing drugs is absolutely appropriate. Where I've been critical is that alone does not address in a meaningful way the issues of rampant drug dealing and violence on our streets. And so that's, you know, a lot of times that has been taken out of context to say, well, I don't think anyone should be arrested or prosecuted. That's not the case. I just think we need to be realistic that decades of US policy has shown that just running around busting street-level dealers is not going to meaningfully change a situation of open-air drug markets and of associated violence. I do draw a very bright line around what I think has been a huge mistake that is ruining lives and is totally counterproductive. And that is the arrest and prosecution of people for the use of drugs. I think that we are criminalizing addiction. It is a huge step backwards, and I think that should be a bright line. It is just, it does not help, and it is actually making things worse. It's not connecting people to treatment. It is causing intergenerational harm and harm that is disproportionately targeted at those who are black and brown in our community.
Thank you Supervisor Preston. Supervisor Avalos.
Thank you. Good to see you Supervisor. Lately, I've been really taken aback by the quality of leadership in San Francisco. I have also been really impressed with how hard your office has worked on the many issues affecting your district, especially affordable housing planning and development. Could you summarize for us your work on affordable housing development? And how would the obstacles that you face be different under different leadership in San Francisco?
Yeah, I thank you for the question. You know, starting with Prop I, which we put on the ballot basically months after I took office, which taxed the ultra-wealthy as generated over $300 million for, intended for social housing and rent relief. We've been of the view, and I strongly believe that we need to be ramping up and really scaling up our affordable housing in San Francisco in ways that we are barely doing. This is, you know, for 20 years, I've been a tenant rights and affordable housing advocate. This has been my life's work. And it's unfortunate in San Francisco that it's become such a fight on these things. I feel like we have successfully gotten hundreds of millions allocated to things like land trusts and site acquisitions and development of affordable housing. But what's been missing, and I hope will change either if this mayor's re-elected with a new term or with a new mayor, is like, this shouldn't be a fight every step of the way. And I think that's what's been frustrating in my position as someone leading a lot of the board efforts to create affordable housing. We should not have, you know, we should be able to come together, put this in our budgets, and be strategizing how to scale up to really make housing a human right in San Francisco. And that's been my priority, and I've been very clear on that. So I've gotten a lot of criticism for the fact that I don't prioritize the market rate housing as much. I don't stand in the way of it either, and to be honest, like there's a caricature of our office. But I have made very clear that my priority is housing for low-income and working-class people in San Francisco. And I think we've delivered quite a bit on that front, though there's way more we could do if we had public bank, a mayor who was working with us on these efforts and really could scale up. But that's the goal. That's what we need to do.
Thank you very much Supervisor Preston. So now with that, the Q and A session part of the conversation is over, and I'd like to give you a one-minute conclusion, conclusionary remarks, and thank you for joining us today.
All right. Thanks for the question. So I was elected to be an independent voice at City Hall to deliver results, and that is exactly what we have done. A new city report shows that our rent relief work alone saved 20,000 San Franciscans from losing their homes. I think we're at a defining moment in our country, and I believe it's important that the Democratic Party step up to confront racism, classism, sexism, xenophobia, and hate, and offer a positive vision for our future. That is the work I have been doing while in office and intend to continue to do. I am very proud to be endorsed by San Francisco Labor Council, the California Nurses, Teachers, California Working Families Party, the Rose Pack Democratic Club, Harvey Milk Club, Tenants Union Affordable Housing Alliance, Community Tenants Association, Tenderloin Chinese Rights Association, SF Rising, SF Black Firefighters Association, Small Business Forward, Evolve California, IFPTE, SEIU 1021, Local 87, Laborers Local 261, Unite Here Local 2, Teamsters Joint Council 7, Elevator Constructors Local 8, NUHW SEIU 2015, Transport Workers Local 250A, Committee of Interns and Residents SEIU, Bernie Sanders, and countless other local elected officials and community leaders, and would be honored to have your support as well. Thanks so much.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
All right, I have moved Supervisor Preston back to attendee block. We are now coming up towards.
Go back before we, I just want to point out to everybody, and it has a lot to do with just some people who were scheduled, whose, you know, whose time slots we had to remove. So we're going to have a 35-minute break until 1 o'clock. And then we're going to do District Seven. There are only two candidates that we're hearing from in District Seven, so it's going to be kind of quick. And then we're going to have another 30-minute break before District Nine. And then, yeah, so I just wanted to kind of give people that heads up.
Yeah. So logistically, what this means for everybody here is that I'm not going to stop this webinar. I need the full recording to be in one file. So turn off your screen, go get lunch. We reconvene, and I will make sure that Mr. Biscotto and Supervisor Melgar are ready to go for their respective slots. I will text them. But we reconvene for the D7 block starting at 1:00 PM.
Thank you. Thanks.
I'm gonna go ahead and promote Mr. Biscotto into the panelist box so that he can talk. And I am pinning him to the window now so that you can all see him as a featured panelist. It's 12:59. When you're ready to go, start us. I believe, Carrie, you're driving this block, correct?
Yes.
That's your barn. My apologies. Go ahead. Or when you're ready, go ahead.
No, that's fine. Welcome, welcome. We're now moved into District Seven. And we'd love to hear from candidates. Just a quick review on format. The first, there'll be a 10-minute time block, one-minute intro where you can sort of make your pitch, eight minutes of Q and A, and then one minute of wrap-up. So with that reminder, although people who ask questions, please keep your member questions to 45 seconds. So with that, Matt Biscotto, if you could, please have the floor and do your one-minute pitch.
Great. Thank you so much. So I'm Matt Biscotto. I'm a fourth-generation San Franciscan, a small business owner, and a husband and father of three. And, you know, I got a great reminder of why I'm running today. I haven't had a lot of time to run during this race because obviously I'm running in another way, but ran up Twin Peaks, you know, up Claritin, up Twin Peaks, and I come around that first turn of Twin Peaks and I start to see the tips of the buildings. And as the whole downtown came into view, just the hairs on the back of my neck stood up because no matter the division, you know, no matter the conflicts we have or the issues we have as a city, this is the greatest city on earth, and I believe the greatest democratic city in the United States. You know, so it's really with that love that I stepped in.
I'm going to go ahead and promote Mr. Biscotto into the panelist box so that he can talk. And I am pinning him to the window now so that you can all see him as a featured panelist. It's 12:59. When you're ready to go, start us. I believe, Carrie, you're driving this block, correct?
Yes.
That's your barn. It's my fault. Go ahead, or when you're ready, go ahead.
No, that's fine. Welcome, welcome. We're now moved into District Seven. And would love to hear from candidates. Just a quick review on format. The first, there'll be a 10 minute time block, one minute intro where you can sort of make your pitch. Eight minutes of Q and A and then one minute of wrap up. So with that reminder, although people who ask questions, please keep your member questions to 45 seconds. So with that, Matt Biscotto, if you could, please have the floor and do your one minute pitch.
Great, thank you so much. So I'm Matt Biscotto. I'm a fourth generation San Franciscan, a small business owner and a husband and father of three. And you know, I got a great reminder of why I'm running today. I haven't had a lot of time to run during this race because obviously I'm running in another way, but ran up Twin Peaks, you know, up Claritin, up Twin Peaks, and I come around that first turn of Twin Peaks and I start to see the tips of the buildings and as the whole downtown came into view, just the hairs on the back of my neck stood up because no matter the division, you know, no matter the conflicts we have or the issues we have as a city, this is the greatest city on earth and I believe the greatest democratic city in the United States. You know, so it's really with that love that I stepped into that and I truly want to promote San Francisco. San Francisco priorities and the San Franciscan ideals, you know, not just here in the greatest democratic city, but across the United States. So happy to answer any questions, but that's why I'm running and I think I represent not only my district, but San Francisco and democratic principles very well. Thank you.
Wonderfully concise. Thank you. I will start with the first question then. The West Side that you represent has really been relatively immune to building more housing. And I'd love to hear from you on what type of housing you would support if elected and how you would promote the agenda to support the housing element.
Yes, absolutely. I think in San Francisco, I mean, housing is a national issue. It's a priority that's that I think we should be prioritizing on every single level. Certainly in San Francisco where we lacked any building for a very long time. I am extremely pro housing. I focus more on the market dynamics as a District Seven supervisor than the up zoning map. And that's really just because I think the up zoning map has brought, you know, it just brought a lot of fear around housing development in District Seven. And I know we do need to have hard conversations with the people in District Seven and I would have been willing to do that. And I would have been willing to work with the up zoning the way it was, but I think I would have executed it a lot different. I would have had those hard conversations first. I would have went to Ingleside Terrace, Lakeside HOA and sat down and said, hey, look, we need to be doing this and this is why we need to be doing this and also let people know about how this would phase in just naturally with market dynamics. And I think, you know, if that reach out and that community process was really done first, those hard conversations were had upfront, I think we'd see a lot more progress and we'd actually maybe be running with the map as it was originally proposed, but now we see a lot of conflict on the issue. And so my is my, my main priority of as a District Seven supervisor is bringing District Seven into the new world. You know, having his developments in District Seven in a way that has community support. And we just saw the Stone Town development get approved, 3,500 units there. We have Parker said that we should get off the ground. That's another, you know, almost 5,000 units there. And then we have Alboa Reservoir breaking ground. So it's clear District Seven can build a lot of units with community support and I plan to continue that work.
Thank you. I apologize for not introducing my co-chair, Michaela Eleoto and our timekeeper, Lanier, I believe. Okay, welcome, welcome. Michaela, do you have a question?
Yeah, thanks. Hi, Matt. Nice to see you. Welcome. So just, you know, real quick, being my question real quick. If elected supervisor, what would you, you know, what do you think? What are the biggest issues in District Seven? And how would you go about? How would you go about implementing change to help your community?
Yeah, I mean, I certainly think public safety is just top of mind for people in District Seven. It is the number one priority here. And I think you know, focusing on both the issues in the district and on the West Side, which really comes from lack of staffing and lack of being able to patrol the neighborhoods effectively and provide a deterrent to crime. You know, but that's still a citywide issue as well. So I think, you know, to do that, I'd really look towards supporting my captains as much as I can, trying to draw more resources and giving more resources to other places that right now need, need too many resources, right? You know, focusing on staffing, focusing on force multipliers, all these things I think can create a bigger deterrent. And I think in District Seven, being such a neighborhood focused district, we do need to focus on revitalizing neighborhood watches. So I would be huge, I'd be a huge proponent of working with the different neighborhoods to create neighborhood organizations that can help our police, support our police and help bridge the gap why, why we continue to restaff. Second, as I just mentioned, I think we need to find a way for District Seven not to be warring over housing and transit issues. This is our California Dem priorities. And you know, District Seven is at war about these things and I wholly prioritize a transit first policy and a housing first policy, but I think in District Seven, it's tricky and we need to know somebody who can balance. You know, the people, we need somebody in the seat who can balance, you know, the different characters in the district and sort of thread the needle and have those hard conversations and do it in a balanced process. I do think you know, we want things to move forward quickly at this time, especially on the things we need progress on, but being a neighborhood focused neighborhood, you really have to have a community process in District Seven. So I really want to try to really execute that with, with the goal of trying to find true progress on the CA DEM values that District Seven needs to catch up on.
Thank you. I'm going to move to Chair Tom's question.
Good afternoon. Hi, Matt. How are you?
Hi, Nancy.
Wanted to ask you about something that was somewhat controversial. There were, there was a family of four that was tragically killed in West Portal. And then a flurry of comments around redesign of that intersection. I want to know where you landed on that and what you would have changed or if you agree with what was proposed.
Yeah, so you know, I, I agree with the compromise that has been reached. And my real criticism of what happened at West Portal was the process in which we reached that compromise. I think if we did not just announce the, the changes, I don't think you would have had a reaction from the merchants like that. And I think we probably would have ended up in the same result if we started there. So you know, I am for prioritizing pedestrian safety. I do wonder why, you know, we focus on West Portal. I drive every day on Terreval. Down Terreval, I'll take my kids to martial arts and on Terreval and Funston, there's no stop sign. And Herbert Hoover gets out every day and you have teenagers walking across that intersection and it's another tragedy waiting to happen. Ask anybody who lives around there, go talk to the merchants there. And so I really want to focus on pedestrian safety and prioritize that, but I think, you know, I think what happened in, in West Portal is we use that tragedy as a opportunity to try to forward, something that we've wanted to see in West Portal for a long time. And I think the way that it was sort of just presented caused a lot of opposition on it, right? And so that's something that I could have worked with, you know, if people wanted to see that changes, I absolutely would have worked with that. I just would have gone about it in a different way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second person is Emran.
Thank you, co-chair Barnes. So I'll be really quick here. I wanted to focus my question on public education in San Francisco. And specifically what the city needs to do, District Seven has, has, does have quite a few population of young, young people. So what this city of San Francisco needs to do to close the achievement gap, improve math and reading proficiencies and make sure that no child is left behind in San Francisco. So everyone that lives in the city grows up in the city, has a chance to stay here, get a good job and live a full, full life.
Thank you. Yeah, of course. Like, look, I think you talk about these ideals that San Francisco have had, right? That no child left behind. You know, you also think about the lottery system, moving kids around, like that's all for good, good aspirational goals and we should keep trying to reach them. I think what's happened is trying to go after these goals while undermining education outcomes. So I think we need to, you know, pursue these goals while just keeping in mind that the, the goal of the USD, the, the, the school district is to provide the best education it can for our kids. And so I, I think while, you know, we certainly cannot leave dump, no child left behind. But we also, you know, need to give as much opportunity to a lot of, as many of the kids as we can. We want to see our kids shine in San Francisco. So I think, again, not, not abandoning those ideals, but make sure we keep learning outcomes, just as important as those is what we need to do. And furthermore, I think, you know, we need to have more accountability as to the mistakes that the USD has made. Financial accountability, there is a roadmap there. The state has provided us a roadmap to fix, fix the USD and we just need the political will to execute it and get in shape. And I think if we can do that and focus on learning outcomes, we're going to increase attendance again. I, I think we lost a lot due to the pandemic. That was handled very poorly. But, but I feel very hopeful that, you know, the next board members, a lot of, we have so many good board members running that we will have the political will to effectively manage the USD and, 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 you know, add in sort of that component that's been missing the last, you know, five years.
Matt, you have less than one minute to wrap up.
Okay, I'll be real quick. Look, I know I'm a first time candidate. I know. You know, it's, it's a lot for first time candidate win, but we're doing great. I've maxed out my matching funds. I've maxed out my budget. I will run a very viable, robust campaign. We're knocking on thousands of doors. And I think I am a good Democrat and I think I am a Democrat that represents this district better than the current leadership. So I really would just hope, you know, you guys give that choice to my constituents and let them pick the Democrat they want to have in this seat. So that's my spiel. Thank you so much. Very thankful to be here with you all and happy to meet or talk with you at any time. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Great. Thanks, Matt.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and remove back to attendee from Mr. Biscotto. We have up next on your calendar that you've given me, we have Supervisor Milgar. Supervisor Milgar is indeed in the attendee box. So I'm going to go ahead. Well, we're, we're a little early. I will, I will defer to you, co-chairs, Barnes and Aliot appear. If you want to start early. I know you have another bit of a, a block of time for buffer because of, because of a candidate who couldn't make the interview. So I'll promote Myrna to panelists right now, but whether you choose to start now or choose to start in three minutes is your call.
Okay.
Hi, I'm ready. If you guys are, I, it's up to you. If you want to take a little break, that's okay with me too.
Thank you. Now, well, with your consent, we can start a couple of minutes early. I'm sort of a stickler for keeping the schedule. Welcome. So we are still on District Seven, candidate interviews, just to give you a quick overview on how it's going to be run. We'll invite you to do your one minute opening, followed by eight minutes of Q and A and then one minute conclusion. Vice Chair Elliot O'Peer is running, excuse me, co-chair, is running the endorsement committee with me and Lanier is keeping time. So with that Supervisor Melgar, you have the floor and you can put a minute statement.
Thank you so much. So I am Myrna Melgar. I'm the current District Seven supervisor. I am running for reelection and would be honored and proud to have the San Francisco Democratic Party's endorsement. I have built a strong legislative record, which includes free muni for youth, the very successful commercial corridor graffiti abatement program, the creation of the Department of Early Childhood, the Family Housing Opportunity Act, and the redevelopment of the Stone Town Mall. In my work, I have prioritized increasing housing opportunities, safety for our residents, improving transportation, reducing our carbon footprint and improving the quality of life on the West Side, particularly today and for future generations. During my time on the board, I have been a supervisor who works collaboratively, respectfully, thoughtfully with my colleagues and the mayor. I think I have the best staff at City Hall. If I am reelected, I will continue to work hard for District Seven, for the West Side in our city, and I ask for your sole endorsement.
Fabulous. Thank you. I am going to ask a question similar to the one I just asked, sort of similar to Dean Preston. Well, it's, it came up in our conversation that affordable house, as you know, West Side has been lagging other parts of the city and building more housing. Do you believe that there is a structural impediment at City Hall or otherwise getting in the way of building more affordable housing? And if so, what is it?
I do. I think that we need more capacity to build affordable housing. And what I mean is we have a mayor's office of housing, which is a small organization within the mayor's office that does financing of affordable housing. I think instead we could have what New York has, which is a Department of Housing Development Preservation, which runs the entire gamut of the housing need from support for homeless families to homeownership for middle income folks. I think if we had a better system to fund, finance, develop, redevelop affordable housing and create new programs, we would have more affordable housing.
Thank you. Michaela, do you have a question?
Hello Supervisor, welcome. You do have a fabulous staff. I will agree with you on that one. So just in general, you know, you have been a supervisor for the last four years. I would love to know what you think your really great accomplishments have been. And if you were to continue for another four years, what you hope to achieve within that, that period, particularly as related to District Seven?
Thank you so much. So I listed some of my legislative accomplishments in my openings. I didn't get to say, one of the things that I'm most proud of is the Love Our Neighborhoods legislation that I wrote, which makes it easier and less bureaucratic for neighbors to put together their little libraries and the benches and all of those things that people do with love for their neighborhoods and we as a city bureaucracy get in the way. So I think that is one of the things that I'm very proud of. In the future, one of the things that I have not yet finished to do is legislation around cooperatively owned housing. And that's particularly important for District Seven because we've always been a homeownership district and those opportunities are very few and far between. And for the next generation, finding ways to make homeownership sustainable, affordable is one of my top priorities.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
So we'll move to Cedric Ekbar, Member Ekbar.
Good afternoon Supervisor Melgar. How are you today?
Hi, I'm great. Thank you. How are you?
My question is in harm reduction, in this movement, this harm reduction movement, which the Department of Public Health have brought themselves solely into, which is kill more black people, kill more people than the police has ever killed. And my question is, why do you continue to support this movement in a city where people are continuing to die?
Thank you for the question. You know, there is harm reduction as a tool and then there's a movement as you described it. It's all of the organizations and the political push towards it. That is not a movement that I've been a part of, but I do think that harm reduction has a lot of evidence in working for some people. That being said, I don't think it is the only path. And I think that in a city as diverse as ours, we need to look at what works, what doesn't work and be able to redirect our resources for making sure that it works for the most people. There is no question in looking at the evidence that African Americans in our city have been the most impacted from the fentanyl crisis. And there's no question that what we're doing is not working. So I am all for trying new things and also addressing what the community says that it needs. So I'm all for that.
Wonderful. Thank you. We'll move to, well, wonderful, meaning thank you for answering. We'll move here to Member Coles. You have a question?
Yeah. Hi. Good afternoon Supervisor Melgar. I want to start by saying that I do believe people should be given grace to change their opinion as they have new perspectives and new data. With that, there are two positions you've taken and I'd love to hear your latest thinking on those. First is in 2020, in an endorsement questionnaire, you supported disbanding SFPD and having the police officers reapply. And then secondly, you have been publicly opposed to the idea of the sanctuary city carve out for undocumented immigrants who are convicted of dealing fentanyl. And I'd like to hear your current thinking on those two positions. Thank you.
Yes, sure. In 2020, we were asked about our opinions about police reform. That was what that question was about. What I answered it, I was thinking about the specific configuration of the Department of Public Safety of the city of Sunnyvale, which has both a police department and a fire department combined and folks rotate through. And I was saying that because we were not yet at the point where we had implemented to the 272 recommendations of the Department of Justice in the police. So four years makes a big difference. This police department and particularly this chief has proven that all of those reform things that we task the police department with could be operationalized. And I'm very proud of the work that they have done. So I do not think that there is a need to reform the organization structurally because they've proven that they can do it. So that is my answer for number one. For number two, I'm sorry, remind me again what you asked me about.
The sanctuary thing. Immigrants, yeah, undocumented, undocumented immigrants who are arrested and convicted of dealing fentanyl in San Francisco.
Yeah. So let me say that for me, the sanctuary city policy is a yes or no. If we water it down, we risk just losing the concept of it. And I tell you why I support it. I think that immigrants to this country are much more likely to be victims of crime than perpetrators on the whole. And I think for communities, for example, if you are a victim of And I think for communities, for example, if you are a victim of domestic violence and your partner is doing something that they shouldn't, you are much more likely to not reach out, go to the police and seek solace if you think that your entire family's legal status is at risk. If you're a child who is being abused at home, you are less likely to go to your teacher and say, hey, I need help, if you think your whole family is at risk. So because of that, it's law enforcement that has always supported our sanctuary policy. And watering it down, to me, risks the trust that has been built between immigrant communities and law enforcement, and I hope that we can keep it that way.
We have to, yeah, there's one. Okay, great. We have time for one more question before we move you Supervisor Melgar to concluding say.
Thank you, co-chair Barnes.
And that is Samra.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Just so, and good afternoon Supervisor. I'll go jump right into my question. How should the city address the situation of families living in RVs around Stone Town on Lake Merced, and in making sure that there's a safe transition to permanent housing?
Thank you for the question. So I am happy to report that the city has been able to house 38 families from those vehicles living in RVs into permanent housing with vouchers. Now, there's still more left on the street and more coming every day, which is why I do think that we need to have enforcement, because we cannot have a permanent unauthorized encampment on our public streets. It is unsafe for the people who are living there and for the people who are using the street. That being said, I think that we have seen a rise in people living in cars and vehicles, and we need desperately a safe, supportive housing site where people can park and have services, including transitioning into permanent housing and other services that they need. I have asked the administration to make this happen. We don't quite have the right department doing it, but I will keep working on it, because I think we need it, not just on the West Side, but for the entire city.
Wonderful.
I appreciate the update. Thank you.
You can wrap up now, Supervisor Melgar.
Okay, thank you so much, co-chair Barnes. We are living in really difficult and polarizing times in our democracy, in our country, also in our city. I am a bridge builder who listens and builds consensus. We need to find ways to come together and to make progress on our most vexing issues. And I have proven that I am that kind of supervisor. I have been a Democrat my entire adult life. I've worked to register Democrats, particularly youth, women, and Latinos, and I have voted in every single election since I became a citizen of this country in 1995. Before being elected supervisor, I spent decades as a city commissioner, working for then-mayor Gavin Newsom. My family came to San Francisco when I was a kid during the 80s, during the Civil War. And this city gave us refuge from violence and an opportunity for my sisters and I to thrive. I've raised three daughters in District Seven, and I'm going to work hard to ensure that they and everybody who wants to can stay in San Francisco. So again, I ask for your sole endorsement, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Okay, I was just thinking out loud to myself, I think that was the first candidate who asked for the sole endorsement. I don't remember anyone actually asking. So anyway, thank you. You are going now be moved by Bo back out of the panel. Appreciate your attendance.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Yes, thank you. We are going to adjourn until 2 o'clock, I believe. Apologies.
Not adjourned. We're not adjourning.
Sorry for adjourned. We're going to take a breath until 2 o'clock. Where we are.
All that recessing.
Recession. Thank you, everyone. We will see everyone back at 2 o'clock, where we're going to then talk to D nine and then 11. So, thank you.
For anyone that didn't catch the back half of that, Carrie, co-chair Barnes said, we're going to recess until 2:00 PM, when the D nine block will start. And we will then hear from Kim that's starting at 2:00 PM.
And then also, Bo back, I just think it's important for everybody to know that when we start at 2, we'll have two candidates, and then we'll have a 15-minute break. And then, again, and then, and then we're looking at a straight shot with the remainder, with the remaining six candidates and no break, just so everybody can sort of prepare for that. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, members, it's 1:58 PM. I'm going to begin to bring us back. So that we can get started right at two with the block of candidates for the D9 block. A housekeeping note, both candidate and member Chandler is up first. Once Mr. Chandler is done with his interview, he's going to be promoted back down to attendee block status. Per the FAQ note about candidates not being panelists for their the supervisor block section if they're running in the same, same, same race for. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and promote Trevor up. Make sure you got your video on and everything. And as a reminder to the, the members of the DCCC, type the word stack in the chat to add yourself to the stack if you would like to get queued up to get called on by the co-chairs. With that, I will pin Mr. Chandler to the video so everyone can see him on the kind of same level as our co-chairs and timekeeper. And when you are ready, I forget who is leading this round. It is.
That would be me.
It is member Alioto Pier. All right. When you are ready, member Alioto Pier. I know we're 60 seconds early, but.
Yes, that's fine. Hold on for two seconds. So did John, is that is yours? Yeah. Okay. Great. All right. Perfect. All right. Let us begin. Hello, Trevor. Nice to see you. Welcome to the interviews for the 2024 election cycle here in San Francisco. I'm your co-chair Michaela Alioto-Pier. I'm joined by my other, by our other co-chair, vice chair Carrie Barnes. And Linear Coles will be doing the time. As I think you know, you'll start off with a one minute question. I mean, a one minute statement followed by eight minutes of Q and A, and then you'll be able to end with a one minute conclusion. And so with that, welcome. And your time will start as soon as you do. So the floor is yours.
Thank you so much to my colleagues on the committee. This is a long day for you. So thank you. I'll keep it short. I decided to run for the Board of Supervisors because City Hall is broken and we needed someone with an outside perspective who isn't going to accept the status quo as an answer. I have knocked on more doors, made more phone calls, and I'm pretty confident recruited more volunteers than any other candidate in this race. We have created a grassroots juggernaut. I actually have folks on the doors right now, And I have the best poll of D nine sentiment that you could possibly have, which is talking to over six, 6,000 voters. The number one issue is safety. Folks want the basics done right. We are a progressive city. And San Francisco hasn't gotten any less progressive. What we want is a city that works. And I bring the perspective as an outsider that can help make that happen. So really excited to answer your questions.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Trevor. So let's start with a general basic question, which is the why you want to run. We would really love to know particularly as it affects District Nine, but what do you think are the most important? Issues in your district? And what would you do as a member of the Board of Supervisors to effectuate change and to actually get them done?
Hundred percent. And this is a very unique race and just election season in that the consistency of what people are talking about is remarkable. Not just in District Nine in the neighborhoods, but across the city. I can tell you in Portola, in Bernal, and in Mission, safety is the number one issue. Folks want an accountable, responsive, and fully staffed police department. And that's why from the very beginning, I've been very consistent. I have from the very beginning, our very first debate at El Rio. I have been the top candidate calling for an accountable, responsive, and fully staffed police department. Especially in neighborhoods like Portola that have gotten neglected for so long. That's on the edge of two different police districts and doesn't get the coverage that the other neighborhoods do across the city. And so what and a lot of folks don't realize that Portola has the second highest rate of commercial burglaries in the city, second only to the Tenderloin. You would never guess that if you looked at the news. And so what I want to do is make sure that we are focusing on increasing the quality of life for all San Franciscans. If you go to the very first community meeting I went to as a candidate in the mission was at the Presbyterian Church. A majority monolingual Spanish speakers to a T, all of them said, we do not feel safe. We are coming home from our jobs at 1:00 AM, 2:00 AM. We used to feel safe. We do not anymore. We want a larger police presence in our neighborhoods. Same in Bernal Heights. I've knocked on almost every single door in Bernal Heights just a few years ago. It was rare to talk to anyone in Bernal Heights and have a firsthand story of crime or even a secondhand story of crime. And now almost every single person I talked to either has a firsthand or secondhand experience, especially of property crime, breaking into cars, breaking into garages. And obviously, we've had the spate of arsons just a few months ago. And so safety and safe and clean streets are consistently what are brought up in my conversations with voters. And so I have a couple of solutions that I've mentioned. First is an accountable, responsive, and fully staffed police department. But as I've said on the doors before, we a fully staffed police department is not going to solve all of San Francisco's problems. But we can't solve all of San Francisco's problems without a fully staffed police department. We need our medical professionals, our crisis intervention teams, of which we have about eight, none of whom would talk to each other, working on one roof, under one roof. So we don't have someone with a gun going into a mental health crisis. But we do have the capacity with a fully staffed department to support those folks that are dealing with our crisis intervention teams. And so when I talk about common sense, I talk about getting the basics done right. In short, it's about we keep doing what does work and we stop doing what doesn't work too often. We yes. So thank you.
That's great. Thank you. So I'd like to have Vice Chair Carrie Barnes ask her question.
Thank you. Hi, Trevor. The Mission District has a unique set of challenges that is in District Nine, of course. Affordability for families, health disparities to start. What in your experience will inform ability to help meet this challenge these?
Yes, hundred percent. The disparities are real and the systemic challenges that have persisted for decades are real. And I've demonstrated in a very unique focus on these. The governor, Governor Newsom appointed me to the California State Board of Pharmacy. And one of the things I have been pushing for the hardest on there with the support of Senator Weiner is access to PEP and PREP. We have seen an unconscionable rise, especially within the Latino community of a rise in HIV AIDS. And what this is telling me is that it is a failure on our part, both as a city and as a health provider. That we are not providing culturally competent resources to make sure we are getting anti HIV, anti AIDS medication out there to both treat and prevent. And so in addition to housing, the D nine has a remarkable history of being a leader on affordable housing. And we need to continue being that leader. We need to also enforce neighborhood preference to ensure that when there is market rate housing built, that if the affordable units aren't built within that within that within those units, that they are built in the direct vicinity. So we are fighting gentrification while we are addressing our housing crisis. And so I believe in making sure that we are being culturally competent and ensuring that we are addressing the very real needs of the mission. And I'm really encouraged by the support that I've had for my plan so far.
Great. Thank you, Trevor. Member Avalos.
Thank you. I put my question in the chat. It's interesting, Member Chandler, that you would say that you're an outsider. It's been reported that as a Republican student, you had campaigned for John McCain against Barack Obama. That you had worked for the American Israeli Political Action Committee, supporting a foreign power. And you have recently spoken in favor of the continued destruction of the people of Gaza against over 60% of the Democrats across the country who actually believe the ceasefire should happen, upsetting and upsetting thousands of local residents. Last month, you refused to attend a candidate forum led by the Latinx community. How can you claim to represent democratic values and the local residents of District Nine when you are such an outsider?
Yeah, I'm really glad you brought this up because it is going to provide just a really good parallel to the trying to the politics that I'm trying to bring versus the politics that are being thrown my way. And it's a really good chance to highlight that. First and foremost, Member Avalos, I made, oh, are you on the camera? I did want to make sure you're hearing my answer.
I'm looking right at you.
Excellent. So I am very proud to be doing very important work on the Sexual Assault and Harassment Committee for the D triple C. And I made the reasons for not attending that debate very, very clear. It's not because of any disrespect for the Latino community. In fact, my outreach continues, and I've reached out directly to most of the event sponsors of that debate for the very, very serious reasons I declined it. And we knew when we were starting this committee that inevitably it would result in partisan attacks. That it would result in mudslinging, but I am incredibly proud to be serving under the leadership of Chairwoman Ho, who has led this committee with dignity and the seriousness that it deserves in spite of the really partisan and uncalled for attacks that we've been under. And I think it speaks volumes that we are actually getting something done that the previous D triple C said they would, but never did. So I'm very proud of the stance I took on that debate. And I've also made very clear that as supervisor, my focus is going to be on the streets of the mission, not the Middle East. There are some candidates in this race that are going to talk a lot about the Middle East, and that's their prerogative. I'm focused on making sure the quality of life of the folks in the mission in the Bernal Heights on San Bruno Avenue, that I'm focused on their concerns. So I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to highlight kind of the distinction in politics that I'm bringing as an outsider to bring some change to our political dialogue.
Thank you, Trevor. And our last question will be by Member Ho.
Thank you. So the District Nine is a super interesting and diverse community. Just you were talking about the Portola, just there.
We are going to have to make it very quick.
Okay, thank you. A lot of monolingual Spanish speakers in Portola, as well as a lot of monolingual Chinese speakers in Portola. How do you intend to build the coalitions necessary to create the change we need to see across the city's ideological spectrum?
I love that question, and I actually go door to door with a translator in the Portola to make sure I haven't have a conversation with every single voter. I think I'm the only person that does that for both the Spanish and the monolingual Cantonese, my community. My website is fully translated into all three, all three languages. And my literature is also fully translated and provides opportunities for that. So there's so much we have in common if we work together and don't allow the divisive politics of ideology that have really permeated this district's politics for so long. And I'm committed to being that bridge builder.
Great. Thank you, Trevor. So now you have a one minute recap or conclusion. The floor is yours.
Absolutely. I'm proud to be a strong Democrat, and you know, I expected the questions that we had here. I was proud to be a delegate, an elected delegate for President Obama to renominate him. And I also expected the same attacks that we see all the time. The one of the reasons I got into this race is because I have a thick skin. I worked on marriage equality across the country. I worked on seven marriage equality campaigns in some of the most homophobic nasty places. And going door to door, talking about everything you're not supposed to talk about sex, religion, and politics. I'm used to having tough conversations, and I'm used to having them and not shutting out the other person. And that's the type of coalition building that I'm going to bring if I'm fortunate enough to be elected to the Board of Supervisors. There's all I'm on what I call Team Reasonable, and we put together a broad coalition of folks who identify as progressive, moderate, and everything in between. And we may not agree on everything, but we agree that City Hall is broken. And but we are not going to get the change we need by electing the same kind of people endorsed by the same kind of incumbents endorsed by the same kind of politi- broken politics that have led us to where we are today. So I'm incredibly grateful to have answered some of your questions here and to have been able to provide that contrast. So thank you.
Great. Thank you very, very much. Nice to have you here this afternoon.
Thank you.
I am going to be promoting Mr. Chandler back to attendee. And although he is a member of the D triple C, he will not be promoted back to a panelist until the D eleven block. Thank you. Moving to my chat bar here. We do have a couple of minutes until Ms. Fielder joins us as our next interview block. I don't see her in the in the attendee list yet to get promoted, but presume she will momentarily. Until then, I'll have a few have a few moments of respite.
Let me ask a question. The questionnaires, are they posted on the Central Committee website?
Yes.
They are, and I can drop the link for you and the public. Actually, I'll share with everybody right now.
Thank you.
For those who are in the chat, not just the panelists chat, but everyone, you will just now see a link to sfdemocrats.org. The somewhat long URL afterwards, I apologize for that. But if you click on that, you will see a page that I put up with all of the filled out questionnaires of those who applied for and had a questionnaire accepted. Democrats were seeking the party's endorsement. I encourage you to read them all. And thank you again to the endorsements committee for working to pull that together and and get it finalized and get it out to the candidates and back. Right, I'm still looking for this Fielder, and I don't see her yet. So I'm going to text her campaign manager one more time. Oh, the good news is is that this is why co chairs Barnes and Alioto Pier created buffer. So we're waiting. Oh, wait, no, just kidding. Here she is. Fielder, you have been promoted to panelist. You have been you are now pinned to the the main area. Coach Alioto Pier, when you are ready.
Great. Ms. Fielder, hi, welcome to the interviews for the 2024 November elections here in San Francisco. We're happy that you could join us. I am Vice Chair Michaela Alioto Pier, joined here by Vice Chair. Sorry, Vice Chair, I am co chair of this committee. Carrie is Vice Chair. So joined with Carrie and also with Linear Coles, who will be doing our time. The format's pretty simple. You will have one minute of opening, followed by eight minutes of Q and A, and then a one minute closing. And so the clock will start when you start talking, and the floor is yours.
Cool. Thank you so much. Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. My name is Jackie Fielder. I'm a mission renter, longtime climate advocate, mini writer, former S of State educator where I taught race flooding class. I've been organizing for a public bank here in San Francisco for quite some time. Used to be on the LAFCO Commission where we oversaw Clean Power SF and was able to to negotiate with S of PC for hundreds of thousands of dollars in studies for Green Bank, for green energy storage, challenges with decommissioning natural gas. But I am proud to be a candidate for District Nine. I love this community. Lived here for the better part of seven years in the mission as a renter, running on investing in affordable housing, community safety that's actually effective, filling our vacant storefronts and 23 housing 2,300 homeless S of USD students. Lots more to talk about, and I'm sure you have great questions for me, so I'm eager to answer them.
Great, perfect. Thank you so much. So we're going to start with just a real general one. As a member of the Board of Supervisors, what would be your main priorities for your district? What do you think the biggest problems are in District Nine that you'd really like to grapple with? And how would you go about effectuating change for your district specifically?
Yeah, so one big issue is our vendors. As you probably all know, we've had a vending ban around Mission Street, 24th Street, 16th Street, Bart Plazas. Certainly not perfect, but I think it's better than how it was. And at the same time, we have had many, I've had many conversations with vendors who have been longstanding in the community upwards of 20 years who have lost their livelihoods. And so one of my priorities is working with them, with CBOs in the community, Public Works employees, S of PD to come up with a plan to expand on hopefully the successful pilot where they brought back the vendors in a very organized fashion. So that's one of the big priorities. Another one is housing 2,300 homeless S of USD students, many of which are in our community. We have an influx of many immigrant families that are sleeping in bus shelters, playgrounds that are turned away because shelter system is just not for our families. And you know, schools like one of us, a horse man, who have actually set up a shelter in their own school, but have had to turn families away because they're full up. So making sure that our immigrant families have legal counseling. There's been no new funding for legal counseling despite an influx of people seeking asylum here in the city. And I would love to see that because then people can actually get to work and they really want to work. Another priority is investing in affordable housing. There's a project in our dis- many projects in our districts that are struggling, struggling with our have been approved, but are struggling with financing. And so I would love to be able to find some federal funding. Was very happy to see the announcement about Fairclot to Rad Funds and our city pursuing eligibility for that. Would love to see our city invest in the 43,000 units of affordable housing that we're supposed to meet for our rene goals.
Great, thank you. I'd like to ask Vice Chair Barnes to ask her a question.
Hi, Jackie. Thank you for being here. Larceny is still pretty high in the Mission District, and I'm wondering in terms of sort of meeting head on the challenges of D nine. Would do you support a fully staffed police department utilizing tools like drones and? sort of meeting head-on the challenges of D9, would, do you support a fully staffed police department utilizing tools like drones and, and techno-
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's a role for technology. For example, traffic enforcement and speeding drivers, but I, I supported Paskin's ban on facial recognition technology. I think in general, we need to use law enforcement resources more effectively and have officers responding to violent crimes and real emergencies. I think the way that we do that is by investing in, you know, street crisis response teams for people who are experiencing mental health crises and not putting really anyone at threat. Investing in community ambassadors that are able to connect people to services, treatment, housing. That way our officers are freed up to respond to those true emergencies. And in general, you know, we have, every single part of our public safety system is understaffed. You know, we need more than fully staffed police department. We need to invest in thousands of mental health beds. Otherwise, we're cycling people through the emergency room. Our jails are pretty full up as well. And yeah, so I think it's a better, better use of law enforcement resources too.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Member Ho.
Thank you. Hello, Ms. Fielder. I am curious, did you support Prop G to bring back algebra to middle school?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So do you believe that, that District Nine, let's talk about policing right now and, and safety, security and safety. Do you think that District Nine has enough police on the streets? Or can you talk a little bit about your feelings on crime in District Nine?
Yeah, as a woman, public safety is always at the front of my mind when I'm walking through the streets. I think that I just looked at the numbers yesterday and it seems that there's a much bigger priority, and this is throughout the city, for people, for on, law enforcement officers to be patrolling rather than on walking the beat. And I've only ever seen two police walking the beat. That was last month. I've never seen any other cops walking the beat, which is what most people want. And the numbers according to S of PD in January of this year is that there's about 90, a low 90s number of officers, any, throughout the whole department, at the mission station that are assigned to patrol and only nine that are assigned to walking the beat. I hear from people all the time that they want to see officers engaging with the community. We do have the retired officers ambassador program. But we don't, I've never really seen them outside of Valencia on a Friday evening and that's, that's fine. But I think there are other communities in the district that would like to see them and see them engaging in the community, building relationships and, and going back to a more community policing model.
Okay, so other than community policing specifically, like do you have any thoughts on the Police Commission and the way that the Police Commission has dealt with some of the issues that we have here in San Francisco? And do you have any thoughts on technology and the use of technology for fighting crime?
Yeah, like I said, I support the cameras and that helping with traffic enforcement. You know, in general, I also want to, I think there's a balance to protecting people's civil liberties. I wasn't for Prop E, I think, I mean, most of my district wasn't either. I, 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 I mean, it was the standard that actually reported that car chases. There's something like a 40% rate of collisions already. This was before Prop E. And they already had discretion to be able to go on pursuits. And so I'm, I also want to balance with people's rights for their civil liberties.
Okay, alright, great. Members, are there any other questions from Ms. Fielder? Have there been, you know, do you have a, a stand on, on just general car safety? You know, that can be in the mission in particular, that, that can become an issue. Like, do your constituents talk to you about the need for, you know, different types of tra- traffic accommodations for families who are walking around the neighborhoods? Or is that something that ever, ever comes up in conversations in the mission?
Oh, definitely. I mean, even around where I live, where we have several intersections that are some of the most unsafe in the whole city. We're talking pedestrians, we're talking cyclists, which is why I support expanding bike lanes in our districts. I support completing a 17th Street bike lane to run across the district. And I also support certainly reforming to the best extent possible, the Valencia bike lane, but certainly not going backward to the past where we don't have one. Yeah, people talk all the time.
Great, thank you. And then with that, a, a, a one-minute conclusion would be great.
Cool. Well, thank you all so much for your questions. I appreciated all of them and hope to work with you all in the future. You can read more about my platforms at Jackie4SF.com. I have platforms on public safety, homelessness, overdose, mental health, many more coming soon, also public transportation. Again, I'm a renter. I am proud to live in this community and thank you all for your time.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for joining us today.
Thank you.
Best of luck. Bye-bye. Alright. So. Where did I go back to? I can't. Alright, so we will have Roberto Hernandez at 2:55, so we have a little bit of a break. And then after Roberto, we will have Stephen John Torres at 3:10 and then we'll start District 11 at 3:25, just to give you all a little idea. Okay?
Thanks for being here with us today.
All right, members, we are at 2:53 PM. We are expecting Mr. Hernandez any moment now. I did just get a text from a volunteer on his campaign who said he is on his way. So I'm waiting for that to translate into finding him in the attendee block. As a housekeeping reminder for everybody, because I could not get the Facebook connection to work, I will be downloading this video the hard way, uploading it to Facebook the hard way, and then posting it on our website as well. So that'll just take a little bit of delay with downloads and uploads. But once that is done, you will be able to see this posted on the party's website at sfdemocrats.org on the elections tab. Thank you. Now, if we can... Just checking more time. And right on time, it's Mr. Hernandez. He is now promoted to panelist. I will pin him to the correct window. Adpin. And without further ado, I believe we are continuing with co-chair Eliot Pierre leading for the D9 block. So without further ado, when you're ready.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Bo back. Welcome, Roberto. How are you? Nice to have you here. Hi. Um, so I am your co-chair for this event, Michaela Eliot Pierre. And I am joined by my other co-chair, vice chair, Carrie Barnes. And Lanier Kohls, member Lanier Kohls, will be our timekeeper this afternoon. You will have 10 minutes, start to finish. The first minute will be a short introduction of yourselves. The next eight minutes will be a Q and A. And then the last minute will be a wrap up that you can give to conclude. So the timer will start as soon as you start. And thank you for being with us this afternoon, and the floor is yours.
Good afternoon. My name is Roberto Hernandez. It's a pleasure to be with all of you here today. I was born and raised in the Mission District in D9, and I have lived my entire life serving my community as a young man. I was trained by the United Farm Workers, S. Chavez, and the Loris Huerta in the power organizing to create positive change. And that's where I learned a lot of my skills. And you know, in those skill sets, I've been able to utilize throughout the years in my lifetime of being of service to my community. I turned the annual carnival in San Francisco into a global cultural celebration that has delivered millions of dollars to our local economy and has taught our children about culture. I started the Mission Food Hub during the pandemic, providing over 9,000 families with food and rental assistance, vaccine testing, and vaccines. I developed a public safety violence prevention program at Roadmap to Peace and Rapp High School. We stopped thousands of evictions and built 1,400 units of affordable housing with our mission, No Eviction. And I've been supporting our local businesses as members of the Mission Merch Association for the past 10 years. And I would love to have your support.
Great. So Roberto, do you mind putting your camera just down a little lower so we can see your hand? There we go. Hi. So the first question we've been starting off with is a pretty basic one. Why do you want to be the supervisor in District 9? What do you think are the most important issues right now facing your district? And how can you effectuate change? How can you get those things done and accomplished?
Well, first of all, I... I love San Francisco. I was born and raised here. And it really hurts me what our city is going through. And I know we can heal our city. And in our particular district, I have spoken to over 1,000 people. And the first issue that comes up is safety. And so I really feel that three things that we can do immediately. We can expand the ambassador program that was already established and have that especially in District 9. Second of all, is to start a senior escort program where we're taking our seniors, picking them up when they need to go to the doctor, take them, buy groceries, take them on a picnic one day to Golden Gate Park or Pier 39, or have them go eat in Chinatown, or have them a taco, you know, Taco Tuesday in the Mission, you know? And third of all, is to have monitors for our parents that we get hired to be in our schools to keep our children safe. The second issue that's become very, you know, is housing. You know, as you all know, you know, the Mission has, you know, has had the highest number of people that have been evicted. And during the pandemic, it got worse. And so we need to really build affordable housing for everybody, you know, from the janitor to, you know, firefighters, to people in our community. Build housing for all income levels.
Great. Thank you so much. Vice Chair Barnes, would you like to ask your question?
Yes. Hi, Roberto. I just wanted to, you mentioned public safety, community ambassadors. I just wanted to ask a little further. Would you support a fully staffed police department and the use of technology like drones and cameras to confront the challenge?
Yep.
Okay. Well, that was quick. I don't know, Michaela, if you want to open it up.
Yeah. Did you want to elaborate on your question, Carrie?
Oh, no, he answered it. I think the question is, did Roberto want to elaborate?
Uh, to your tongue.
Hi, everyone. Hi, Roberto. Nice to see you. So your activism and your organizing in the Mission District is legendary. I mean, we all know you as the mayor of the Mission. And I appreciate that you have such a deep history with such an important part of District 9. So there are parts of District 9 that are outside of the Mission, and the Portela is also a very important district. And I want to know what your plans are and what you have done in order to reach out to the API community in your district as well.
So I actually have, during the pandemic, actually, we provided a lot of our Asian members of our community with food during the pandemic. And it was food that was appropriate. members of our community with food during the pandemic, and it was food that was appropriate for our community. One. Second of all, is I have walked door to door at every single business and met with each and everyone to learn from them what their issues are. And clearly, it, not only them, but a lot of elders that I have met with to learn from them. I've learned that it's safety. They're all concerned about safety. And so that's the number one issue that I will focus on to make sure that all our residents within District 9, including Portla, is, is, is safe.
Thank you for your answer.
Thank you. Haseeb Imran. You're on me.
Thank you. Thank you, co-chair. Good afternoon to you, Mr. Hernandez. You touched a little bit about it in your opening remarks. I wanted to talk about the issue of food insecurity in the Mission District specifically. One in four residents of San Francisco face food insecurity, and there's a new study out by UCSF just published a few days ago that states that food insecurity is a driving factor in a surge of, in a surge of liver disease for Latino children. So if elected supervisor, how would you ensure families have access to fresh groceries, including fruits and vegetables?
Urban farming. And we've already began with our Native American brothers and sisters to address, how do we go back to growing food ourselves? You know, a lot of Latino families, they know how to grow food. And we are the farm workers, as you all know, throughout the state of California, the United States. So we know how to farm. We, we have a lot of land in San Francisco, whether it be at Golden Gate Park or many other pieces of property that are not being used where we can actually grow our, our own food. Can you imagine in every school, we took 15% of the schoolyard and taught children how to grow food? And then they go home and they teach with their parents in their backyards, start growing food. Can you imagine we start growing food on every rooftop possible in San Francisco? We can grow food here in San Francisco. It's about urban farming. It's about having a vision and having a plan over the next three, five, 10, 13 years.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that. Member Akbar, and this will probably be the last question.
All right. How you doing, brother Roberto? Brother said, how you doing?
I'm good.
Okay, so my question, all right, my question is simple as this. What is it like being a candidate of color running in this city?
It's tough, you know, but one of the things that clearly we, many, many years ago, when there were no people of color on the Board of Supervisors, we as a city decided to have district elections. And having been part of District 9 from the very beginning, you know, I've seen the challenges, a lot of my brothers and sisters who have ran have not won. And so I've taken those learning lessons from those who have not won and implementing, you know, a new strategy so that we can win and be able to have the kind of representation that we need on the Board of Supervisors from our community.
Thank you. Thank you, Roberto. With that, we actually have about a minute and a half. If you'd like to give your closing or any other, other points that you would like to make.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you all for, for considering me and having me have the opportunity to, to talk to you today. I have, for, for the past many years, you know, as a parent raising seven children here in San Francisco, and my oldest now getting ready to graduate soon from Mission High School and getting ready to go to college. You know, I know the amount of time that it takes to be dedicated to be on the board. And that's why actually I waited so long because I wanted to be a parent first. I want to be the soccer dad, the Uber dad, the cook, you know, the PTA dad. And as a family man, you know, and I've, I've, I kept that promise to my wife and my family, and I've done that. And I love my city. I love my community. And with all the work that I've done with every department in San Francisco, I have worked with every single one of them. And I know how they function. So I know that I can move in as a supervisor and start getting the work done and get the work done that's needed in our district immediately to solve our problems within our community.
There we go. Wonderful. Well, thank you so very much for joining us today. It was nice to have you here.
Have a beautiful blessed day. Adios.
Thank you.
I have next on our docket, Mr. Torres. He did, his campaign manager did text me and say that he is running slightly behind. And he could not log in early, so I could get him queued up right away. But he should be here right at 3:09. So just, just right before his, his slop begins. So we have a little bit of, a little bit of spare time before that starts. But we're, we're still right on track according to your, your schedule, co-chairs. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. His team just emailed me. He's getting on now. And here he is. All right, I've gone ahead and promoted Mr. Torres to panelist. He should be in the queue in one moment, and then I will pin him, pin his window to the, to the main viewing area. There we go. All right. Add pin.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Bo Back. Hi, Mr. Torres, can you hear us?
I sure can. Thank you so much for working with me. That was, I had to jump into another.
Sure. Well, thank you for taking the time to meet with us. I am your co-chair for today's interview. My name is Michaela Aliodo Pier. And we are joined by my other co-chair, Vice Chair Carrie Barnes, as well as different members of the DCCC. And member Lanier Coles will be taking the time today. So she will be your timekeeper. The way that this meeting will run, you will have a total of 10 minutes. The first minute will be an opening. The next eight minutes will be Q and A, and then the last minute you will have to give us a concluding statement. So with that, the timer will start when you begin your presentation, and the floor is yours.
Okay. Hi, DCCC. My name is Steven Torres. I am a candidate for District 9 Supervisor. As I've been sharing with a lot of folks recently, I just celebrated 25 years of having moved to San Francisco this past Monday. And most of that time has been spent in District 9. It's been spent in District 9 as a renter, as a nightlife and hospitality worker. And I'm currently in one of the city's small sites programs buildings. I, I have fought and won two eviction battles. I know what it's like to have to work hard to make rent and, and to work in an industry where a lot of us are largely unrepresented. There is local too, but they mostly cover hotel workers and folks that are in corporate stuff. But a lot of us are, you know, get hired and fired with no reason, get injured, and a lot of us are undocumented. So I think a lot of this informs my candidacy, and I feel is reflective of a lot of residents in District 9. And that's why, why I'm doing it.
Great. Well, thank you very much. When looking at this race and at the possibility of being elected to the Board of Supervisors, what are the issues within?